Good evening and welcome to the April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, Common Council City, Connersville. Let's start rise for Pledge of Leadership led by Councilman Bill Gray.
Pledge of Leadership. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Routs.
Let's pray, Father, we come before you again this evening, Lord. I'm grateful that you are good and you're God, Lord. And we just coming before you tonight, asking that you would meet with these city leaders in this meeting. I pray for your mind and your heart. And God, I pray for unity in our city. I pray, God, that you would put your favor and blessing upon us. And God, I pray that you pour out your spirit and your power. And Lord, I just pray that we would truly as a city here in Connersville seek to honor you in every decision that's made. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone. Remind you to please turn your cell phone ringers off. We will begin with your call.
Councilman Collins.
Here.
Councilman Warner.
Here.
Councilman Barrett.
Present.
Councilman Williams, Jr.
Present.
Councilwoman Phillips.
Present.
Councilman Robb.
Here.
Councilman Gray.
Here.
All right, we have the minutes from the April fourth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those? If not, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All favor, signal five as saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Move on down to new business. Uh, we have the public hearing, approval of pending orders, three, seven, eight, two, utility rate orders. Brad, can you open them up?
We have a proposed rate increase of two percent a year, each year for the next three. And, uh, I've talked to, been able to talk to just about everybody about it and explain it. And, uh, these will, these increases will keep the sewer department stable with the increased debt service that we have because of this project. We, um, are going from about five eighty a year bond service to about eight hundred and change. So we need this increase to sustain our, uh, revenue at a level that will. And also, it's sort of inflationary increase that will help us. The chemicals and the price of everything we're buying and doing is going up. So it's just an increase that's required to keep us out of trouble on sewer. And I'll answer anybody's questions about it.
Let me open it up for the public hearing. And then if we have any more questions, then we can, uh, ask us. So I will now open the public hearing up. Clint, is there anyone out there from the public? Nope. Anyone from the public in here? Okay. I will close the public hearing and open it up to council for questions.
No questions.
Doesn't look like it. So if there's no questions, we can entertain, uh, approving pending orders, three, seven, eight, two. On the first reading.
Motion.
Have a motion and a second. Uh, all favor, signal five as saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Second.
And a motion is second, all favor, signal five as saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
And a motion is second, all favor, signal five as saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Very much. Item B. We have approval pending orders, three, seven, eight, three. Uh, the public, the Board of Works, uh, voted to recommend, make a recommendation to approve this to the council tonight. Um, they have two parking lots out here. The city hall has a north parking lot. And then, uh, parking lot on the east has always been the police parking lot. Um, we realized that we had some ADA parking issues with that parking lot. And, uh, in order to redo that, it was not to be repainted, but it's by ordinance on where you park. Since it's a, it's a city lot. Um, in doing so, I didn't really want to go through the expensive restriping and everything if we needed to maintain the lot. And I could not find the last time that lot had been maintained. Uh, so really what the maintenance it needs is to be crack sealed to allow, to stop water from getting down there. And the asphalt needs sealed itself to protect it and make it last longer. So the street department's going to, uh, we're going to do a training day there with Seal Master, who we're buying our products from. We're going to do crack sealing, mastics and seal the part tire parking lot and then re-stripe it to meet the ADA compliance. Everything in this ordinance is the van accessible and the ADA accessible lots will be the first three spaces where I park, Rosemary parks and Diana parks. That will become the ADA for city hall and the police because we have to share entrances. Technically, that's where it's supposed to be anyway. Uh, it's across the parking lot, which is not where it's supposed to be. So, and then the remaining north parking, I mean, south side of the parking lot there along the building will be police parking, detectives, everyone else. All the employees will be moving to the north side. The first two lots will be, uh, city hall visitor, then we'll start with quick treasurer's office and work my way back. So this lot over here, which was all police parking before, um, we are going to make the south row all, uh, city parking for anyone. We are eliminating the very first spot on each side because there's a utility pole in the way. And that way people can turn it in and out safely without hitting a car or utility pole. And then the north side of that lot will be pool car parking for the police and then, uh, dispatch parking. And yes, we are working on Duke, working with Duke, trying to get a better lighting situation back here. There is a light. We just, we had the police look at it at night time, it was very dim. So I'm trying to get them to get an LED light so we can really light that area for safety. But this ordinance will not be, take place as soon as we pass it because we gotta get the parking lot done and then re-strike. Uh, we're trying to get some timing issues there with Seal Master on training, but we want to go ahead and get this approved. So once we get it done, we can go ahead and get the stripping done quickly. So if there's any questions on that, very straightforward.
I have, uh, obviously a few questions. The parking lot in one hundred East Fifth Street. I, I still think that should be, um, the city parking lot period. And I still believe that we should move the nine one one out on Fifth Street in front of their door because they, I believe they're gonna have some challenged people working. And they have had some cha, physically challenged people working in the past. And if that comes about, we're gonna have an issue with parking them there down here in the alley. I don't necessarily agree with getting, eliminating two parking spots. I mean, parking downtown is at a premium. I believe we can redesign that a little bit and get better parking.
The pole, the pole's right in the middle. We didn't need it because of the city parking before. We're glad people are turning in out there. There's not enough room for a driveline. We had to eliminate them for turn lanes.
Well, you know, we, we had cars parked there as a police department for years. We never had an issue of anybody hitting that pole.
It was a police lot, not a public lot.
I understand that.
There's not enough room. We had to take them out.
I don't have any issues with this parking lot. Uh, I believe that there's enough parking back here with the north side parking lot to, uh, put our overflow of police cars, our, our backup cars back here in the back parking lot. I mean, if you want to make it, I don't have a problem with eliminating a couple of parking spots if you want to make it a public parking spot.
We need this for a city business parking lot. We have to keep the pool cars back there because we need as much city business parking around here as we can. So that's not a whole lot of city business parking lot back here. So we park pool cars there that never get moved other than when we need them. Let's take up three spots we need for city business.
I, I still think that we shouldn't have our people that's going in dispatch over here in this parking lot.
They are still able to park out on the street if that's, if they have, um, anyone that's handicapped.
I under, I understand that, but then, you know, you got specifications that if, if you decide to, to enforce the nine one one parking area, then they're, they're in violation out here. So what are we gonna do? We gonna enforce it or we not gonna enforce it?
There is public parking out there on the street and they would be able to, that's not limited to one or two hour parking that they would be able to park at if they need to be parked closer to the door.
That's the part I disagree with.
So Mayor, we are removing those signs?
Which signs?
The ones that are out there. Is that what we're, we're talking about?
There's no signs. I mean, out here on Fifth Street?
Yeah. Are those signs being removed, the one hour, two hour parking?
That's by law, and so I haven't, I don't know about that. I know that there's going to be a handicap added over here because we have to add a handicap. So there'll be handicap parking added right there.
Okay. So are we taking the signs out with this or not?
I don't have the signs there.
It's a different one.
And that should be a different ordinance.
Okay.
Completely different ordinance. Any other questions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve pending orders, three, seven, eight, three, on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion is second, all favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Have a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Second.
And a motion is second, all favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading.
Motion. Second.
Have a motion is second, all favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And there will be, we'll have to make new signs too. So after, I forgot about that, but that's nothing big. Most of them will just be taken off and removed then. Okay. I R C, approval resolution two zero two two dash three three, bond issuance. Brad? Whoever's talking. Okay.
Hi there. Hello, everyone.
Just introduce yourself and where you're from.
How you doing, Sarah?
I'm doing all right. How are you?
All right.
Um, I'm Sarah Correll. I'm with Ice Miller. Uh, we're your bond counselor on this deal. Um, and this is a resolution approving the stormwater bonds. Um, so the Board of Public Works has done all the issuance documents. Um, this is the resolution for you guys as a fiscal body to approve, the Board of Public Works approving the department to do this. So, um, that's all that this resolution does is basically signs off on those bonds being issued by the stormwater department.
Any questions from council? No? If not, I entertain a motion to approve resolution two zero two two dash three three.
Second.
Have a motion is second, all favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Next, we have resolution two zero two two dash three four, reimbursement, council, isn't there?
Resolution twenty, twenty-two dash thirty-four is a resolution to reimburse two thousand dollars into the, into the council other contractual services.
Questions? Not, entertain a motion to approve resolution two zero two two dash three four.
Second.
And a motion is second, all favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item E. What you have in your hands is very confidential, by the way.
Yep.
Uh, for the F C, from F C and Bank. The APC was wanting, uh, Joe, if you'll explain this a little better.
I'll let you do that. Um, sometimes on big, major projects like this, you'll have a, a, the person have to obtain a bond to make sure that, um, everything goes away that we think it should be in case there's financial difficulties. Um, it's becoming increasingly more common for people to get, um, what's called a letter of credit, essentially a bank, um, or whatever their financial, um, however they're financed, essentially to state that, hey, they're, they're in good standing. They have this ability. Um, here, I think this is more than adequate for this project, um, as far as their, um, financial assurances. It, it's really just a, in lieu of them spending a lot of money on bonds as bonds become increasingly, um, disadvantageous to, to, to take out, um, this is kind of a, a more economical way for them to be able to show that they can, they got the ability to take care of any issues that might come from this project.
And this is the owner of the project. This is not the contractor doing the work.
That's correct. This is the actual owner of the project. That's correct.
So if there's really any questions, we need to take a motion to approve, sorry, rephrase that. Without giving details, is there any questions on that process just describing? If not, entertain a motion. Jayden gave the motion to approve the line of credit for the Mets Q O Z B, which is Qualified Opportunity Zone. Uh, we have a second.
Second.
And a motion is second, all favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Brad, will you please text in and let us know that that's done because we're running a leave on that, please? Item F. Approval pending orders, three, seven, eight, four, amended restated bond ordinance. Uh, who wants to go? There you go.
I think this is me again. Um, so this is the ordinance that you guys have already adopted. Um, basically, we do a restated instead of just doing a separate amendment so that everything isn't listed twice everywhere in the transcript. It just makes things a little bit cleaner, uh, when we go to close. Uh, when we were looking at the final numbers, um, for the bonds and when we did the tax, um, evaluation of them, these are considered a reissuance of the two thousand nine A and the twenty eighteen's. Um, we're just changing the payment dates from April and October to January and July at the request of the S R F program. That's something that they had asked us to do, um, when we went, when we first presented the ordinance. Um, because those payment dates changed a little bit, it shifts when that principal's paid just a little bit, but it's enough for this to be a reissuance under the federal tax code. Um, so the only change between this and the ordinance that you've already adopted um, is allowing for the reissuance of those bonds.
Any questions?
Confirm what pages we need to sign.
Um, right before the exhibit A.
Okay. If not, entertain a motion to approval pending orders, three, seven, eight, four, and, uh, amended, amended restated bond ordinance on first reading.
So moved. Second.
And a motion is second, all favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And we have a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second, all favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And a motion for third and final reading.
Motion.
Second.
And a motion is second, all favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Stone, you have a follow-up, sir?
Good evening. It's good to see everyone. Um, I just wanted to provide a quick status of task. Uh, since your last meeting, we've been working on a few different cost reduction programs. Um, we're working with the quick treasurer and her team to work through, uh, Department of Revenue, state form on fuel excise tax rebates. We're trying to work through that process. Um, additionally, we're working through some of the American Rescue, uh, Treasury filings as well. Just a little administrative task. Um, as far as a head, heads up, as far as your next, uh, staff report meeting in May, we are planning to kick off the two thousand twenty-three budget preparation internally next month. Uh, so we'll have a year-to-date budget, budget actual report and summary, um, at that meeting for you as well as a draft budgetary adoption calendar that walks through all the kind of major milestones from May through likely October, uh, of this, of this year. Uh, and then throughout each of our status reports going forward will really be a budget update relative to how those conversations and developments are going. As far as broad strokes, um, we'll do a lot of the revenue estimates in July or June and July. Um, that will be shared with you all and that will set really the, the total, uh, monies, monies fundable. And then we'll start working with departments for their requests, June and July, and ultimately look to bring, bring a draft, uh, mayor's budget, proposed budget to you all, likely late August, if not your first meeting in September. And at that point in time, you'll have, you'll have really the remaining portion of that scheduled for about two to three months to go through your adoption and evaluation. That's all I have unless there's any questions for me.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on down to department reports. Um, Chief Jones is not here today. Big Nate's got it.
That's all right. Good evening, everyone. Um, okay. Uh, for the month of March, uh, overtime, um, have a total of, uh, eighteen hundred fifty dollars and seventy-seven cents. Seven hundred and eighty dollars, ninety-three cents was F L S A. And manpower shortage was one thousand sixty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. Um, fuel for, uh, the month, month of March, um, let's see. We used six hundred and ninety-six gallons or six hundred ninety-six point ten gallons. Uh, total cost of fourteen thirty-six twenty-one. Any questions on that? Okay. Uh, we had a hundred and sixty-four incidents. Uh, twenty-two percent of those were fire incidents and seventy-eight percent were EMS incidents. There's a breakdown there on the list on your paperwork. Training hours, uh, we had thirty-five point five, uh, training hours for the month of March. And then we had fifteen inspections. Uh, any questions?
Is this your first time?
It is.
All righty. Truck fire. Good job.
Good job. Good job.
Thank you, sir.
You'll recommend you to Scott.
Director Coulter.
Why don't you come on up? Maybe you told him.
Hello. Um, March report for utilities. Revenue, um, it's pretty good for the month. Disbursements, not bad. Wastewater's gonna be high, uh, probably a few times this, this year due to the Headworks project. So there'll be some expenditures that, um, just wasn't planned for. Uh, but our fund balances should cover those. Overtime, we have a one thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars of schedule overtime. We'd be at the wastewater plant and, uh, three thousand dollars and, three thousand dollars of just regular overtime. Attached is our sewer crew, water crew, some of their work orders that they've done. The water and sewer plant monthly report is attached. Miscellaneous, uh, Brad, Cindy and Erin attended the, uh, the Indiana Water Alliance Conference, May sixteenth and seventeenth for their continuing education classes. Um, an update on the Woodside Water Tower project. It is, uh, now emptied. Um, the drain that we installed worked out pretty well. It's scheduled to be cleaned out on May seventeenth. So we'll get that back online hopefully by end of the, of the month of May. Just some claims. Just a little out of the ordinary. Uh, the water plant, there's a five thousand six hundred thirty dollar claim for the water plant for the detention tank. It's for a, a transducer. Um, pretty much what that is, it measures the pressure of the water and determines the depth of the tank. Uh, that tank sits underneath the water plant, don't really see it. Uh, but it's very important because it operates the plant. It tells the wells when to pump, um, down the well field and tell the, the pumps in the building to pump to the public. So it's very important we get that fixed. There was a three thousand dollar claim for a new camera head and cable. Uh, and a twenty-four thousand dollar claim for a new software transition. And lastly, we had a claim for eleven thousand dollars for a new grinder pump at the Woodside Lip Station. That pump got hit by lightning, so we had to replace it. Any questions on the report?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Mike mentioned, I'm gonna mention a little further the, you're gonna see a lot of red ink on the sewer and the stormwater reports going forward over the next year. For example, we've been paying two or three hundred thousand dollars a month out for the engineering design costs on the Headworks project. And we've been paying those out of our funds as part of our contribution to the project. So a lot of, there's gonna be a lot of months where we have transferred a lot of our investment funds over into O N M so that we can pay these expenses. And then at some point over the next month or so, we'll be moving a big chunk of money all at once to fund the six and a half million dollars that we're gonna chip in on the project. So we've got mostly all the money moved around and ready to transfer that when the time comes. But you'll see some, I suppose that will show up as a big, huge disbursement maybe in the next month or two. Wanted to tell you that, um, that street department today, for that report, we got a crack seal machine that we are using for the next probably month to crack seal at the very least Eastern Avenue, Western Avenue and some of the city parking lots and many other streets. So people kind of be watching out for the street department to be out in the middle of some of these roads working. And, uh, I guess we used to, the guys said, hey, we, we used to have a machine just like that, that we got rid of years ago. And one more bought. So what it is, is we buy the materials from a place called Seal Master and they provide the machine free for us to use to do the crack sealing. So this will be our first go around for a while with crack sealing. And so, uh, you'll see the guys out there doing that.
How long does that go on?
Over the next month.
As a loading of the equipment?
You get, for every skid of materials you buy, you get it for a week. So you buy this big skid of rubber and you dump it in there and it's sort of like a big melting pot. And then you go out and, uh, use it. And I think that the machine stays heated overnight once you put the materials in.
So that virtually could go on for a year?
Well, we could use it for a year. But each skid, I think, so each week we'll use about, uh, what did I say? About three thousand dollars of skid for the materials that we use. And, uh, so.
It doesn't quit just because you, you've used that skid. If you buy another skid, you get to use it.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's not what's.
Apothetically, as long as we keep buying a skid of materials, we can keep it and we could use it. We could stay busy all summer with it if we had it, but we.
Thank you.
I think we'll have it about four weeks probably this first time. And, uh, you don't have a copy of it because I just got it today. But the transfer station report for the month, we had about, I'll send you all a copy.
We had a copy up here.
Oh, did they get one? Good. Very good.
There's another one.
So, uh, eight hundred and thirty-two tons of trash this month. Four hundred and eighty-one from, uh, came to the, uh, in the trucks and three hundred and sixty-one came of people disposing at the transfer station. And we sent about twenty-seven estimated tons of recycling. And the only other thing I wanted to tell you, I told the Board of Works today, I'm gonna be helping Glenwood for a month or so while their water operators out of commission. So there, there's a real shortage of water operators these days. So I'm gonna be having to go over there five days a week for about an hour a day just to oversee things and sign their paperwork for them until their regular operator gets well. And, um, I attended a meeting of the, uh, Eastern Indiana, I think we're calling it, Regional Planning Commission. That is a I F A recommended committee that we've set up for all of us, uh, managers, so to speak, of utilities in this area to all to get together and network and talk about our issues and our problems. So that's something, that's something new that we're doing that we haven't ever done before. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad? Chief Perry.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Snow was a pleasant surprise this morning.
Pleasant?
Well, something like that. You've got our monthly report. Um, overtime's continuing to be an issue. Uh, we do have the, our two newest officers riding on the road, trying to get some experience before they go to the academy. Uh, should be an easy transition once they get back. We're trying to minimize paper usage, so we've reduced the monthly report to a smaller size. I hope that works for everyone. Rosemary asked that we help out with the paper usage and we're doing our part. Um, any questions on any of the numbers on the report? Um, on the other paper that you got, the other report from us, it was brought to my attention that there is some acronyms that, uh, you guys will not understand. So I'm going to put together a, another copy of this and send it out by email this week that will outline everything that you guys probably don't understand regarding that. So there may be some confusion until you get the new one.
Appreciate it.
But it's a new form and it'll show you every call that we take, um, broken down into, um, all those categories that you guys see. And it makes it a little easier to understand where our guys are going, what they're responding to. Um, out of those calls that you do see, um, there were thirty drug-related calls, twenty-four paraphernalia-related calls last month. 24 paraphernalia-related calls last month. Any questions on that report? Should get a little easier once we get going on it and you guys understand it a little bit better. The other main thing we got going now is the body cameras that you guys know are in. We have training for admin and our trainers tomorrow on the usage and storage of the evidence. So we should have them up and going, we're hoping in a 30 days. Once we can get our trainers trained and then get all the officers trained and have it going. We're hoping to have them operational in 30 days.
So the body cams are in?
Yes, sir, they finally came in. It's been a few weeks ago and we've just been waiting for training to get set up and it's finally happening tomorrow. So we're excited to get that program going.
So you're now training the trainers?
We will be after tomorrow. We'll have all that set up and...
And then the trainers will train the rest?
Yes, ma'am. Any questions? Go ahead, sir.
The storage of the video, how long's that gonna last?
It is, it's a cloud-based system that we don't have any control over. And right now, we are on a five-year cycle with our contract. So we pay a yearly contract for them to store the evidence for us.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pause.
Over the month of March, we had 14 hours, 27 minutes of meeting production, 12 hours, 52 minutes of original production. That included the 2022 candidate forum and the state of the city address, which as far as we can tell was very well-watched. We'll continue to see the numbers final on that. Also, we started a new program, Move Groove and Rejuve, which airs Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays at 3:00 PM. That's an exercise program primarily aimed at seniors. But it's an excellent, excellent program. And it's taught by Peter Henry, Madden. And then it goes for about 45 minutes and I highly recommend that everyone give it a look. I also thought I'd give you something else to look at. This form right here, worked together a few numbers. The first one is, just to let you know that I manage city-county Google map addresses. So the reason I've done that is, is that they're out there and available. Anyone could try to grab them. All they need is, is a couple little pieces of information and they could take them and whatever they wanted on it. So we own those, the city owns those. And we have the ability to make changes on that and to control that. The yellow highlighted ones are the ones that I have not been able to get yet because there's no mailbox there. So we're working on that. And Rosemary had a good idea on how to get that accomplished, so we'll see if we can do that. On the other pages, this is the city-county website, cottlecommunity.com, just to give you some, some basic information. For March, we had 16,968 page views, so it is being used. The utilities had 1,515 of those page views. And it's that they're getting their information quickly and then they're leaving, which is kind of what the site's designed for. We want to get that information out there as quickly and as simply as possible. I think that's probably a pretty good number because that means people are getting what they want. They're getting it quickly. And then the final page is just to give you a rough idea. The top was a map that didn't copy well. But if you look down at the bottom, you can see where the predominant number of people are coming from. And I think that's very interesting. So we've got a lot from all over the state. And then you'll see some of those little specks off to the right up there. Those are hits from China and India. And those are most likely hacking attempts and we're stopping those. That's all I had. I know that's a lot of data, but I wanted to share that just to give you kind of an update on that.
It's encouraging to see the hits from out of town.
That's most likely business generated, so very good.
Thank you, John. They're updating GPS?
GPS, no.
The surveyor's office.
The, oh, GIS you mean? No, I don't update GIS. Anything that's on Google Maps, I can update and try to keep accurate. As a matter of fact, I even look at local businesses and try to make sure that they're accurate. I'll, you know, when EMS moved, for instance, I moved that address on Google Maps so people would know where it was. Otherwise, nobody, yeah, nobody would know otherwise because Google does not do that. They rely upon individuals in each community and they're really, I don't know if there's anybody besides me locally that does that. So in small communities, it probably wouldn't be done, so. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Hardes.
Good evening.
Good evening. Oh, John said, you know, if it's not on Google, it didn't happen, you know, it's not there. Let's face facts, so. Everyone should have a copy of my monthly report. Don't have a huge amount this month, law and little stuff going on. Not really anything great, grand, or wonderful, just normal business. We did answer 315 calls for service, which puts our year-to-date at 942. So we're keeping pace to have a pretty average year at this point. Do have one vacant medic position that I'm trying to fill. I will probably do some paid advertising. I told the Board of Works that when I do a paid advertising through one of the job sites, it is a little expensive. So what I tried to do is when I pay for that for a week or two, I want to be able to answer them within hours. So if I get something at midnight, by eight, nine o'clock in the morning, I want them to have an email or a phone call or a text message from me to get the most for our money. I've had some days where my schedule's flexing, where I'm not coming in till later, or I'm gonna be out of town, or I'm in meetings or something like that. So I haven't pulled that trigger yet, so. And I do still have one off from a non-work-related accident. It did include a news article back and it referenced two bills, one that I was watching pretty closely about them both being passed into law. One is the Medicaid rates being upped. The article says 30 years, depends on who you listen to. The one said, the one reference I saw said it had actually been over 40. So I'm not sure which one's really true, but it's been a long time. And the other one's regarding insurance that basically, so the insurance companies are gonna kind of play ball with this on fair, fair field instead of basically lowballing because we don't have any recourse in that case. So those were, those were good things to see coming out of legislative sessions time. Does anyone have any questions?
When was the effective dates on those?
On the bills? The Medicaid is, I believe, July 1st of next year. Insurance, I do not know. I could lose, I will try to find that. I'm not sure when that dates the best. I'm sure it's not this year, so. But I can find it. Alright, thank you. Thank you, sir. Chief, what can I do?
Hi.
How you doing?
That's for last. Well, there's lots to talk about at the park this month. The first thing I want to update you on is the pool. We've got some really good news. Last week, the guy from Sphere was out and he finished his testing on the gutters. And long story short, he did find some leaks, but he was able to fix all of them pretty easily. So the next step is they will start putting the new liner in. And that process is gonna take probably four to five weeks. So I'm hoping that they're gonna be back and it's not in the snow or rain or anything else. And right now, we are on target to open Memorial Day. The Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, I should say. Couple things, couple questions we've been getting at the park, so if you guys get these as well. Yes, all the restrooms are open. And Kitty Land will be mulched hopefully this week. If not, it'll be done by next week. The mulch is here, we just have to get it moved and spread over at Kitty Land. I did include our goals, finally got those finished. Kind of broke them out by facilities, programming, administration, and sports. Gonna do some facility updates this year. You can kind of rethrow those and let me know if you have questions. Something that Javon had brought up last meeting, as we think about the bridge project getting started, was, you know, how are we gonna prevent people from driving up to the bridge? And we had actually started talking about blocking the grass area. For one, because it's already in an ordinance that you're not supposed to park on the grass. And the other is because with disc golf, it's become more and more dangerous for people to just be driving wherever they want in the park. So the first area that we're gonna focus on is that big surrounding grass area around the bridge. So that's gonna get underway as soon as our seasonal staff gets on board, which will be, gosh, just a few weeks from now, the end of May. So that will be the first place that we'll be working on. Had a really great meeting about Second Street last week. We ended up with our fundraising just under $300,000. It was at $299, 789 or something like that, so just under $300,000. We sat down largely in thanks to Alex Hudson and Paul Martin for their labor, donating their labor and their time. Very confident we're gonna be under budget and right on target, even with some of the equipment prices have gone up. But very confident with the budget right now. And so the next steps are the geotech, the soil samples. And then we're gonna start ordering things like the swing set and the, some of the equipment. And yeah, so they should be, I think, construction documents will be done in the next month. And then we'll start moving ahead from there. Let's see. The fountain is not running yet because we need to clean and seal it first before we get it turned on. So if you do get asked. Still working with Ryan Baker on getting that landscaping updated. He said by the end of the month, which with this weather, it might be more into May now. But that landscaping is still on the list of things to get finished. And then in sports, we do have, I included our flyer, you might have seen this on Facebook, mark your calendar for May the 7th. It's opening day for baseball. We had a pretty average turnout. We have 97 in softball, 107 in baseball, and 176 in T-ball. We will be having the parade on Saturday, the 7th at 2:00. And then we will have some of the games. And then when the sun goes down, we will be having a League of Their Own on the big movie screen at the senior field. So hope we get a lot of people to turn out for that. For those of you who don't know, we did just hire a new secretary at the park. Her name is Kate Walling. She's actually gonna start tomorrow. She's gonna start training. McKenzie's last day is Friday, so I'm glad they're gonna get several days together. So we do have another new face at the park. And we are full for seasonal staff, that went very well. And another thing with our administration goals, something the park board and I have been talking about is, you know, what trainings and certifications do we all need to have? So two years ago, I got my AFO, which is a aquatic facility operator certificate. Last year, Pete got the CPO, which is the certified pool operator. So they're just certificates that you really need someone on your staff to have those. This year, this month actually, Pete is working on getting his certified playground inspector certification. So we have someone on our staff who has a certification in making sure our playgrounds are safe and what is grandfathered in, what is not, and those types of questions. So one thing we're working on with the park board is just budgeting for those things too because they're not free, you know, and we do have to renew them every couple of years. One thing I'm going to pursue, my anniversary date is May the 6th and that will be my third year, finishing my third year at the park. And since my degree is not in parks and recreation management or something similar, I'm just now eligible to start my CPRP, Certified Park Recreation, something professional. Stupid acronyms. But it's, it's just, you know, as we think ahead, you know, wanting to have a knowledgeable staff and, you know, make sure that we're up to date and the best professionals we can be. So I will be pursuing that in the next few weeks. Hopefully I pass. But it's, I don't see the price on here. It's less, I think it's between $500 and $1,000 for the...
It's on the back.
Is it on the back?
Yeah.
How much is it? It's not too terrible. Yeah, the training materials are $2.50, so it's not, it's not awful, but... But it's something that we've been discussing to make sure that everyone is carrying the right credentials, you know, as we move ahead. So I think that's it, unless anybody has any questions, complaints, accolades.
On the slowly for the trails, I know you've got a mountain of things to do, especially with your staff, but how often are they gonna regularly check those trails?
Well, that was actually on our goal list for last year and we never got around to it. And this actually, I was talking with Chief Bolos, gosh, more than a year ago. Because at that time, we were having a lot of problems with people camping, especially back there. And he said, why don't you just clear it out? You know, and, you know, just clear all the brush out and just really try to make the trails back to trails. So that's what we mean by that. And hopefully we get around to that this summer. We don't have, last summer, we did a lot. We put up that new fence, we put in the disc golf course. We just, it felt like we had a lot of bigger projects last summer and we don't have anything. I mean, the bridge, but that's not our staff, you know, so. I, I'm hoping that's something that we will get to this summer because I want to make sure that we maintain a balance among all eight parks and we're not just constantly focused on Robert's Park. You know, we want to keep everything, you know, in the best condition we can. And Smalley's kind of gets pushed to the bottom of the list sometimes, so. But it would just depend on how fast it grows back, you know, it would just be...
Well, I don't even mean necessarily cutting it back, but if somebody could go through at least like a gator or something, at least monthly, and try to help clear some of the tents out and some of those other things that are a little unsightly, it might help that.
Do you have any update or projection on the beginning of the bridge project?
Probably September, he said, yeah. He's supposed to come out in the next couple of weeks and just start telling me where like the, the orange fencing is gonna go and all that stuff, so, but yeah. It's supposed to be September to December is the timeframe.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We run down the old business. We have approval pending orders 3780 and 3781. Be on the second and third reading. Before we do anything, does anyone have any questions? I got Adam here again today to answer any questions on the report side, the feasibility study he's done. Or any questions you have at all, so.
The only, the only thing I have is on the trash holding, I believe it is. Because there's, there's no specification on when people can put their cans out or when they can retrieve them. I think that should probably have been addressed in this. That's all I have. Just some people are leaving them out all week long.
I'm making notes.
I believe the past street superintendent always announced to make sure you have your cans out by 7:30.
by seven-thirty the day of your trash pickup. And every, all the residents know what day of the week they're slated to have their trash. I don't think it was ever stated when for them to-
In an ordinance.
Right, but more of a word of mouth.
Do you see any harm in putting that in there?
We would have to add it after this ordinance is approved or denied going to. We've already approved first reading, so we can't modify this ordinance.
Right, I understand. I'll just-
At the next amendment, yes.
Pay attention to that.
That wouldn't be a bad one.
That's why I took notes. Any other questions, comments?
Are you doing them both together?
Yes. We approved them that way. Okay, if there's no other comments, I entertain a motion on this, I don't need a motion, sorry. I'm the second reading motion for approval of pending ordinance. Let me get them correct here. Three seven eight zero and three seven eight one. Three seven eight zero is a trash rate, and three seven eight one is the transfer station rates. So, move.
Second.
Second. Motion a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can you pose same sign?
No.
Uh, I only heard, I only heard a modus.
No.
Let's just go real call.
Let's do real call real quick.
Councilman Rob?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
No.
Councilman Collins?
No.
Councilman Warner?
No.
Councilman Barrett?
Yes.
Councilman Williams, Jr.?
Yes.
Councilman Phillips?
Um, yes.
Passed. Forty-three.
So, we have the second reading done, and let's take a motion for third reading.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion a second for third reading. Real call vote, please.
Councilman Gray?
No.
Councilman Collins?
No.
Councilman Warner?
No.
Councilman Barrett?
Yes.
Councilman Williams, Jr.?
Yes.
Councilman Phillips?
Um, I have something to say before I cast my vote. Um, I don't like, um, increases for fees for service any more than anybody else does. And I say fee for service because that's what they are. A fee for a service, not a tax. Completely different. Uh, what hasn't increased in the last ten years? The answer is, for one, is our trash and recycle pickup services. If our trash and recycle services were privatized, we would have zero control over future rates. We're all too familiar with introductory rates. Great the first year, maybe two, then the increases begin. Not so great and no control. With this increase, the total trash fee for residents will be fourteen dollars a month. Optional recycle will be seven dollars per month, as well as a just deposit for the container. Recycle will be optional. You will still be able to take your recycle to the street department or to the transfer station, your choice. As a city councilperson at large, it's my responsibility, respect, to represent all of you. As of today, not one negative response has been received by the mayor, his office, or by the utilities office where bills are paid. Actually, responses have been positive. I feel the majority of you, despite our common dislike for fee for services increases, and understand the need, my vote is yes.
Councilman Rob?
Yes.
Order three.
Okay.
Pass.
Order's passed. Okay, moving on to miscellaneous business. Um, I do have some miscellaneous business. I have an appointment to the tourism board. Just so you know, on boards that operate, um, some boards I'm involved in, some boards I'm not involved in. Tourism board, there's a shared joint board in the county and the city. I'm really not involved in that. So, what I do is the board, when I have a vacancy that needs to be filled by an appointment, I just don't appoint someone to that board. I pull someone in who's on the board and say, give me a recommendation, 'cause this is someone that you have to work with as well. And I don't, I don't wanna be stirring the pot, doing something that'd be detrimental to the group, so. They've done their research, um, they've found the person to come, they've brought them to me. Obviously, I try to approve them, uh, but I'm usually fine with that. And if, you know, if I have an objection to it, I'm pretty upfront and talk to them pretty directly, so. Uh, the tourism board wants to appoint Amanda Falk to the board, and I agreed to do that, so Amanda Falk will be the, uh, uh, my appointment to the tourism board. Is there any other miscellaneous business?
I'd like to, um, ask the mayor and the council to, uh, look into, um, like entertaining the idea of going back to the truck route change. Again, to Western Avenue, due, due to the fact that it's brought to my attention, you know, we've had some routes by the state change, which routes more people through, uh, our truck route, because they're not allowed to go across forty-four. We've had, last year, we've had thirteen accidents with that trussel on Central Avenue. Year before that was nine. Year before that was twenty. I'm sorry, year before that, two thousand and nineteen was four. And this roughly take an officer, if you only use one officer, about an hour to investigate these. So, and it's no cost to the city to, to implement this. The state's going to provide the signs. You're gonna work with us on the traffic lights. The only route disagreement I have with them is they wanna go across Fifth Street. I think that's gonna present a problem for us as far as the citizens and the police department, because I think a truck coming east, I'm sorry, truck coming west and making a right turn off of Fifth Street onto Grand Avenue, Western Avenue, is gonna take out a light pole and a traffic control box. So, I suggested that, and I suggest like the, the ordinance goes all the way to Third Street and goes back around across, and I think that's a, a good avenue for the trucks to go.
That's exactly what I proposed to them. I haven't heard anything back from them.
They're all for it.
They haven't responded. I, I posed a question in December. I could have responded again, actually, today about it. I was like, ooh, I've had a couple of questions and concerns. I haven't gotten any response yet, but I'm not gonna sign an agreement that's not good for us, and that agreement's not good for us. So, I actually posed those exact questions. If we're gonna do an agreement, it's gotta be spelled out correctly. Not turn on Fifth Street, it needs to go down to Third Street. Just, I agree with you on that. Gotta go to Third Street, but I have not gotten anything back from them.
Well, they, I've made contact with them, and they, they made a reference going down to the bypass. I'll say now, that's county. You guys are gonna have to get into their ball field if you do that.
Which is a better route, but that's outside-
Kinda depends on which way you go.
That's outside of, right. If you're going through Union County, then going down Third Street. If you're going south of town, then go the bypass, but that's county control. They would have to do that with the county.
Right.
I'm just trying to get so it goes to Third Street safely and then go either way and not go through Fifth Street. That'd be horrible, going through Fifth Street through town.
I mean, it'd be great for a trucker, if he was going east, but not for west.
Multiple questions, and I have not gotten any response back yet.
Could you guys be talking to different people? Maybe Clarence, you can give him the name of who you talked to and he can-
I'm talking to the same gentleman he is.
I have not got a response back with a correction in language from any of the questions I've asked.
Okay, I was informed that he was gonna get ahold of, but he was gonna wait, so.
I've been trying, and I have got nothing. So, I don't know if, I know they have a new director in place. I don't know if that's a holdup. Uh, but I have not gotten anything back from him. In fact, this morning, we actually sent a follow-up email.
So, I mean, are you on board with that?
Oh, absolutely, but I'm gonna make sure it's done the right way, and we have the right language in place. And then the first language was not correct.
Yeah, I, I disagree with the Fifth Street. I also-
Yeah.
I also questioned about the traffic light at, at Sixth Street. Um, and that's merely because of the fire station's there. I don't know if we can put in a blinker light there, that they're willing to work with us on that.
They're willing to work with us on the lights. They did say that, which I, that was one of the questions I had. Jeff and I had addressed some of the questions on the lights and traffic safety, and if that was gonna be our burden to bear, which it sounded like it was the first time, so we brought that point up, and they said, no, they'd work with us on that. But the, I don't remember, there was more than just a Fifth Street question. There was, I think I was down to two final questions. One of them was turning on Fifth Street, just going up to Third Street. Makes more sense. Plus, it's a wider turn radius.
Absolutely.
I don't remember my second question off the top of my head right now, but there were two questions that had, that had not been answered, and they're the same ones I asked in December. I just don't have an answer to.
Uh, I don't know how the council feels about, uh, the Sixth Street light. Um, I, I don't know whether we should eliminate that to avoid trucks, if we get this route done. Should we eliminate that to avoid trucks parking in front of police, the fire station? Or should we have a signal change where if their doors open, the light changes automatically north and south to where traffic flows?
That's a good question. The, I think a traffic study would have to be looked at before we do anything with that. But that's a good point, the farm and the fire station.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I try to cover all the bases.
Yeah, I know. You're fine. But no, we have been in correspondence. We just haven't gotten anything back, so. I don't know if it's because of the new director. I don't know what it is, but nothing.
All right. I, I just wanted to touch base with everybody, and I, I, I think with all the construction going on in the state, and they're routing everybody through our town, not that I'd disagree with them coming through town, because they might stop and eat, but, uh, I, I just think that we should make it more appetizing for them to get through town without causing undue distress on the police department and, and emergency services as far as that trussel goes. That's been a nightmare since I've been here.
Yep.
And everybody's, everybody's cooperated. The railroad has moved that leg out from Western Avenue. I mean, this has been going on for like fifteen years, looking at this proposal. And one mayor looked at it as changing the whole route.
Yeah, we, they, that's-
Blocked one and, uh-
That's what they wanted to do the first time, and I said no to that. I said that, that needs to be a business truck route, because you have businesses on Park Road that are there because that is a state route. And that needs to stay a state route for those businesses. Trucks, I tried to get them to do a business truck route, which they didn't wanna do. They don't wanna take any more ownership, and it's gonna be all on us. So, they'll do it, but it's on us to maintain. That's what people need to understand. It's gonna be ours to maintain.
Same as it always has been.
No, they may-
It is our street.
Yeah, but the truck traffic and everything's gonna change. That, it's gonna be more traffic on their street and everything like that. But it's gonna be ours to repair and maintain and fix, so the cost's gonna be significant over time. But it is a better route. It's a safer route.
But on the other side, I coin is, the more traffic count you have on that street, the more grant money you get, if I'm not mistaken.
No, and the, the pager rating dictates that, and that's-
Because that, that's what I was informed by.
I haven't heard anything out of your bread. I've never heard that. That, everything gets rated by the pager. They go everything by the pager rating system, which is, which is the road conditions.
So, maybe I was misinformed, but that's, that's what I was told. So, let's-
No, we're, I'm in agreement with moving that truck route, just the truck side, not the state route, so I don't wanna confuse people, but-
Because if you remove the truck, the state route, that's gonna cost eleven million dollars, and twenty percent of that would be ours.
Yep.
And there's no way we could do that.
No.
There's no way we should do that.
No.
I agree with that.
Yeah, so we're just making sure everything is done correctly, so. We're on top of it. I just, we just don't have that response. I really don't know the reason why.
Okay. That's all I have.
Any miscellaneous business?
Appreciate it.
Nope. Anybody from the public out there? Nope. Okay. Move for German. Have a motion for German?
So moved.
Have a motion, seven, on third, signal five, a saying aye.
Aye.
Can you pose same sign? Motion great.